Glencoe Silver Lake School Board, August 12th, 2019, school board meeting. Please join me in standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alicia, will you please do a roll call for us?
Jamie?
Present.
Kevin?
Here.
John?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Myself, here, and Donna.
Thank you, Alicia. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, September 9th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Glencoe Silver Lake High School Community Room, 443-444. Acknowledgements, do we have any acknowledgements at this time?
Just a couple that are in my report.
Okay. Public input relating to the agenda. Second call. And third call. Hearing none, reports and presentations, activities director, Dean Schwartz. Okay? All right. Okay, thank you.
And that will be good because we'll have a lot better final numbers on things for activities.
Administrator Committee reports, business manager Sanders, would you like to begin?
Yeah, just a couple of things I'll report on for tonight, just updating you a little bit on some of our projects, of course, and Chris probably has some of this in his report too, but our biggest one being the parking lot, we're getting there, we're not done, but we are definitely getting closer, we opened it today to allow the public and students to be able to park in there for practice starting today, so that was a good thing. So they have lights to finish up and some concrete and some cleanup work and stuff, so hopefully we get that finished soon and then they'll finish up Silver Lake here within the next couple of weeks, they told us by the 26th, so we're waiting for a response back from the contractor to firm up some of those timelines for us. So that's exciting, it's come a long way. Other projects that we've been kind of wrapping up, the high school hallway tile that we replaced this year, the two wings, the science wing and the social wing have been completed and grouted, they're now working in the pool room, they drained the pool last week gradually, so now they're able to get at the gaskets that need to be fixed along with the diving board and the ladders, they've started painting in there, so a lot of work happening in the pool room and that'll be shut down a whole month, so the public was notified that, that that would be closed down, it's not a lot of times that we're able to close that facility, that room off to get the work done that's needed because of the water in there, so we've got that shut down for about a month. The cement work in front of Lincoln won't happen until after school starts, the contractor doing that work is just so far behind like every other contractor that you talk to, but he is going to get it done in September over a weekend, so it won't conflict with school days, so he'll get that done for us, some of those bad spots that we want to take care of. Audit, we kind of finished up most of our audit work, we're still finishing up a few pieces for the auditors as they request them, so I would like to thank my district office staff and acknowledge all their hard work, when you've got three new staff in the district office all trying to gather information and you've got a number of auditors sitting in the back room, it gets to be a little much some days, but we made it through that and now the rest of it is just kind of being completed electronically and by emails and getting everything submitted to them. They should have a presentation ready for the board at the October board meeting like we've done in the past, so at this point, everything is on track for them to present at the October meeting. And then along with that, I've started working on the summer levy data entry information, so we'll have the preliminary levy at the September board meeting to start that discussion, so working on levy and that would be revenue for the next school year, for the 2021 school year, so starting on that budget as well. Any questions?
I don't think so, I'd like to thank the district office staff and you as well, when I visited with the auditors, they made comment as well how helpful and how appreciative they were of the work that they were able to do with you in conjunction with you and the information that they were requesting and the, like you said, the new district office staff, having many new ones going through this audit here at GSL for the first time, very much appreciated by them, but also us as a board too, so thank you very much, along with the district office staff, thank you. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Michelle, and good evening, I'll review the report that you have in front of you, I wanted to start just by saying a little bit about a book we're reading at the elementary level that aligns with our school improvement plan, based on our upcoming work with English learners, it's called culturally responsive teaching, and I have a copy here if anyone ever wanted to look at it, and what I'll say tonight is it, interesting in the sense that it incorporates some new research on teaching, so it involves cultural awareness along with neuroscience, so Joy and I are excited to bring this to our staff and implement some of the common sense strategies that are included in that book. You can see down there under positive behavior interventions and support, some new information, our theme this year at K through six is respect, and then we're going to go from there, hero shows respect, so great opportunities, you know, especially for the younger kids to involve superheroes and capes and superhero missions and such, and then you can see our acronym there, hero, help, encourage, respect, and on task at our all-school meetings, then we'll surprise our kids with some superhero missions, perhaps like swimming and subway and burgers and bowling, so really, really looking forward to that and appreciate the work of our pro team. One thing I'll add to that at K through two, you know, I don't know, respect is a pretty abstract topic, and I think I'm really going to try to hit, in the way I talk and interact with kids, I think kids are really going to have to focus on gratitude and empathy as well, because I think without gratitude and empathy, you have no idea what respect means, so I'm really excited for that theme, it has so much potential. Look under curriculum and assessment, I know that Joy plans on leading our math committee in a review of potential math curricula, much, much needed for our teaching staff. You see state and federal programs, I'll start with title, that should say 9-1, the grant application due, and I thought I would show you our individual allocations, and for all of you, especially if you're new, I'll explain briefly what each of the title programs is. Title one is direct service to students, math, reading, even behavior interventions, and you see that's our largest allocation, and 90% of that goes to salary benefits for teachers and support staff. Title two is class size reduction, so Donna Hammers was very much a big help, worked on the budget and were able to support a teacher's pay and benefits from that, and it helps the district because it's helping our general fund balance. Title three you see is a smaller allocation, English language learners, not enough to pay for a teacher, of course, so what we do is we put that toward Tina Aguilar at Lakeside, and it helps us keep her in the important work she does with our kids, who are English learners, and their families. Title four is new, I'll do the best I can, I expect an allocation of about $10,000, and it's, I like this for two factors, since our allocation is under $30,000, we don't have to do much explaining to MDE, no written report, we can use it for a well-rounded education, and Michelle and I have talked about possibilities, you've got counseling, you've got STEM, so it can help support some of the salaries and benefits for those programs, not a large allocation, but that's what I expect it to be. Any questions on title or anything else before I go on?
Is the title four typically salaries?
You know, it's brand new, I don't, from the few examples I've seen, Jamie, the examples I've seen were salaries, I don't know if I have enough info to say it's typical. We're learning a lot about that, and we have our longtime director, Rosie Daly, retired, and we have a new area director, so she's helping us along, we're helping her along, so as I get more information, I'll be sure and share, and of course, I will share next month what, how we're using that money after some guidance from MDE.
But typically with MDE, they didn't give a mandate, I mean surprisingly enough, which is, I mean, don't get me wrong, that's a good thing, they didn't, but the parameters are still being defined, is what you're kind of saying?
They're defined, but they're very much open-ended, if your allocation is under $30,000.
Okay, above then it has to be documented.
It has to be documented, here, you know, we did a little work over the summer with Kate at MDE, and she said salaries are definitely, they would use the term allowable expense, so I do know that for sure.
And how is the dollar amount that GSL receives arrived at, is it a formula, or, I mean, why do we not have $30,000 or more, why don't we have $20,000 or 15, how is the $10,000 arrived at for GSL?
So, all of these, Jamie, are based on our free and reduced population, and then the state is given an allocation, and then the state allocates money to districts, so our allocation, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, I see that as holding steady, even though our population of kids who are free and reduced is, it's been up and down, but because the state is increasing much more rapidly than GSL is, we're getting the same portion of that pie and not more of it, but it's based on our free and reduced count. Michelle reminded me, thank you, that there is a set aside for our non-public schools as well, so that would be First Lutheran, of course, and that's part of working with this, making sure that they have their allocation, they know what to do with it, and that they are making expenses that are allowable, because it's really not their world, so we send a teacher over for title one, they get professional development for title two, title three, they don't participate because they don't have any English learners, and title four, their small portion, they'll probably use it perhaps for a little bit of counseling, it won't be a lot, so.
So as a set aside, we have to do the documentation of not only the set aside, but how it's utilized at First Lutheran?
They're very, the state is very careful on, you know, hammering into the, we control the money, so like if they want to go to a workshop, Jamie, send us the information, and then the district office will get them set up on that, we pay the bill, so we, the money is under our control, and then really the only, my role in that would be, I need to determine what percentage of the workshop is secular, because we can only pay for the secular portion of the workshop, so.
Sure.
We haven't run into any problems in the past, so I don't anticipate that.
Yeah, cool. Any other parts of your report?
I've got more.
Go for it.
Is that okay, yeah, I thought I would stop because title's kind of a big, and it's that time of year, you know, when it comes to the surface. Happy to say we've placed two tutors for Minnesota Reading Corps, and after, I think we've been without for two years at Lincoln, we have a tutor, excited for that, thanks to Mike for coming up with a laptop for us, for her. One thing I've been noticing, you know, and you can see probably from one of our requests on the agenda, we're just continuing to see a significant increase in special education, and we're quite a bit above the state average at pre-K through two, and these are rough, you know, when we do that child count, for ours, we'll know for sure, but we're at least at 25% of our kids receiving special education services. That does include speech only, which is the most common disability, but the state average includes speech only too, so it's a valid comparison. I'll go to the back for some school community partnership, Common Cup, they're going to be here on the 21st distributing school supplies, so we really appreciate them, check-in days and open house for Lincoln and Lakeside, and the PTA is going to plan another fabulous fall carnival, so we certainly appreciate them. Some recognition, I did want to say, first of all, we had four kindergarten registrations today, we're up to 97, I still do expect to be close to 110, maybe a little shy of that, but that's still what I'm expecting, so that was nice to see four more. You can see Tammy Sherman amongst all the acknowledgements, mentor program has been, now it's well-established, she's reached out, she has mentors assigned, she's going to welcome all of them at Gert and Irma's and will use just a little bit of professional development money to get them a coffee and a pastry and a great way to welcome our mentees to GSL. Out of all the other acknowledgements, you know, all very, very much deserving, but I don't know why, but always do quality work, but the custodial staff was really amazing this year. They finished earlier, were super efficient, and I did make sure to thank Brady personally, and it was a really good, good summer, so thanks to all of our contracted services or our supplemental services like technology, so what questions, if any, do you have?
Any questions? Have we filled our music position yet?
We have not.
Okay, so is that posted, or where are we at in the process?
So, there's been an offer made, and so we're just waiting for that process to play out.
Okay. Any other questions? One final question, Bill.
Of course.
On the books that you mentioned, or the book that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Are you going to be having staff utilize those as a, like a book talk, or like during PLC, or can you just a little bit more expand on what your plan is as a?
Yeah, no, thank you for asking, because it just kind of formulated, you know, over the weekend, I think it'll be best to have our leadership team, which is meeting tomorrow, take the leadership role in this, and then bring it back to PLC, so do the, kind of the, you know, teach the, you know, teach the teacher model on that, so I think that'll be most effective that way. All staff will have a copy of the book and will read the book, but we'll rely on leadership because they've had it for six to nine months and have read it already, so.
Awesome, yeah, keep us posted on that, or maybe through the Lincoln and Lakeside leadership team representatives or something too, just to let us know how that's going or how it's received, or how it's being implemented as far as the ideas or conversation around it, that's some good work that has the potential of happening.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, yeah, thank you all.
Yeah. Mr. Foss?
Good evening, guys, I'll start with school improvement, we're doing positive behavior interventions and supports, or PBIS, again this school year, this is the third year that GSL will be implementing this, 712. Last year was really the first year where we were fully rolled out to students, and it was a big hit, both with staff and students. Mike Hafes is a math teacher that we have at the high school level, and at the end of the year, he does a end-of-year review for kids to fill out, and every student that he sees, so I don't know how many hundred it is, fill this out and hand it to him, the goods, the bads, the uglies, whatever it may be, and over and over and over again on those reports were how much kids liked the PBIS implementation, and how much they liked the purple cards, and how much they enjoyed the positives being sought out as opposed to the punishments for the negatives that they have done, and I'm somebody that found value in it from the beginning, but I was a little blown away with how many times I read that. If you as board members are interested in seeing any of those, I do have a folder of them in my office, just shoot me an email and I'd gladly share it with you. Along the same lines of that review, because right behind PBIS and how much they enjoyed that was Panther Power Hour. Again, this will be the third year that we're going into this for our Power Hour, both with PBIS and with Power Hour, we're going to review what those are with students and staff here coming up in workshop week, open house, and then the first day of school. Power Hour again is a way for students to get some extra help they may have needed. I know last year, one of the things that I did is I brought to you how many failures we had with Power Hour and how many failures we had without Power Hour, and what we found over the last number of years was that there really wasn't a big difference in the number of total failures between it. I didn't bring the numbers with me, but I certainly can share it with you if you want after, or I can share it at the September board meeting, but after I dug a little bit deeper, what Power Hour helped our student body do 9 to 12 was it brought a lot of Ds to Cs, and it brought a lot of Cs to Bs, so kind of our middle students is really who it was affecting, and I know kids really enjoy it, and it has been beneficial, especially for some of our extracurricular kids who are busy every day after school and may not be getting the time they need to get homework done, or maybe the, you know, whatever they need, it gives them a break in the middle of their day, even a mental break for them to kind of refocus for the last few hours, so I'm excited that we're doing that again for a third year here at GSL. Another school improvement is we have our junior high retreat this week on August 15th, starts at 8:00 AM and will be held here in the GSL Community Room, some of the things we're going to cover is what are our RAP going to look like this year, what we'd like to do at the junior high level or seventh and eighth is have somewhat more of an intervention model, so perhaps on a Tuesday, if there's any students who need help with social studies, the social studies classrooms would be open, and those would be movement days, Wednesday could be a math, Thursday, science, Friday, English, and it just, again, gives students an extra 20, 25 minutes of help on things that they may need to have. Other things we're going to cover are team building, and then again, PBIS at the junior high level, professional learning communities, we're going to continue with those, 712, this year we'll be holding them every Tuesday and Thursday with our schedule change, I know the staff is very excited to have more time to collaborate, some of the things they're going to work on are grade level, data, curriculum, 712 vertical meetings, and one of the things that I was really adamant with my staff when we talked about this was, I think some of the nerves came in of how many meetings are we going to have in the mornings, we have more time to collaborate, now how many meetings are we going to have, and I've been very upfront in telling them that you will have two, even when we have a staff meeting, we will hold those on the Thursdays, my staff meetings are very, very short, a lot of it is, thank you, I appreciate everything you do, here's the quick things that you need to know as a staff, from there, I'm going to send them back to their PLCs, so I wanted you as a board to know too, that that's my expectation at the 712 level as far as PLCs and morning meetings, kind of covered that, I got ahead of myself there, but monthly staff meetings, again, we did that last year, prior to last year, they had a staff meeting every trimester, and I know last year it was very, very welcomed to get the whole staff together once a month, even just to be normal human beings and see people maybe at the high school level that you wouldn't normally see as a junior high teacher, and just works really well with collaboration and kind of that sense of family that I wanted to bring to GSL. Speaking of sense of family, this is something that I preached to our new hires when they came in and when we did our interview process throughout the year, we have new mentorship meeting for these new hires on August 21st, big thanks to Sue Magnussen, as she's our 712 mentorship leader. The six new hires we have are Teagan Hill Norby, who will be a Spanish teacher, Tana Schaefer, who was a former grad at GSL, will be our Health FIAD teacher, Stacy Palmer in Business, Jeff Iverson Choir, John Lambrecht in Science, and Carol Silas is a new sped teacher, and it would probably sound weird if I came and said I'm not excited for all of these hires, but I am ecstatic for all six of these people to be joining us next year, and I genuinely mean that when I say it. Some of the other things at the bottom, the school community partnerships, we have our open house and our freshman orientation on August 28th, for the freshman orientation, we're going to have student activities members present, we're also going to have student activities members there for our seventh and eighth graders who are incoming to help with lockers, schedules, tours of the building, introductions to teachers, anything that new incoming students, questions they may have, continue with our Olvea's bullying prevention program, that'll be during RAP, both the junior high and senior high level, we talked a lot about PBIS programming, and we'll continue our Hispanic outreach program, that's a learning initiative that we've typically done through Stevens Seminary, and the two individuals that have done it for us at the high school level, junior high, high school level have been Carol Silas and Cynthia Reese. And then the last thing that I want to say, which I did not write on here, but just what a difference a year makes, I showed up a little bit early today and Jason was here and I got to chat with him, and it truly feels like it was a couple weeks ago and this was my first board meeting that I had as a principal, and I don't know if I hit it very well, but I was shaking, a little scared, kind of hungry, sort of nervous, didn't really know what to do. Here we are a year later, and I have grown so much in who I am as a professional and even personally, and I need to thank all of you as board members, I need to thank Bill and Michelle in kind of shaping where I'm going with this career path, and I couldn't be more appreciative, and I wanted to let you know that I'm more excited than ever to be a part of GSL and hungry to continue improving what we have, so thank you, and any questions?
Thank you, it's nice to have you on board, a quick question for you, Matt, the PLCs and staff meetings, you said are on Tuesdays and Thursdays typically, what do you foresee with the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday as far as expectations? Any ideas at this time?
As far as what my expectations for staff would be?
Yeah, yeah, what will?
That would be their general prep time, so if they come in and they need to get their day set, if students need help, they would be available to them. I know what we have talked about with the 320 end time is if we have to be flexible in timing, so if a staff can't get out until 3:45, are they able to come in at 7:45 the next day, I'm okay with it, as long as they vocalize it and they let their kids know, their students know, so that if they were going to have any students come in to get additional help, that they wouldn't show up to a locked door.
Yeah, good, thank you. For the Power Hour, that's 912, right, so how is the Power Hour concept introduced to the ninth graders coming in from the junior high to the high school, is it done by the counseling, is it done by RAP and sort of homeroom, is it done teacher by teacher through the departments, how do the freshmen kind of get a little quick orientation on what Power Hour is and how they can utilize it to their benefit?
That's a good question, so there's a couple different ways that they'll know about it, on freshman orientation or an open house, I personally meet with them in the auditorium, so any freshman that shows up, their family will come in, and I'm not naive to think that all 115 freshmen are going to be there and listening to every word I say, but I do give a presentation in open house, I also do meet with every grade level individually the first day of school for about 30 minutes each and let them know what my expectations are, freshman is a little bit longer because of the Power Hour, all students are aware of what it is, so our incoming ninth graders know what Power Hour is, but the intricacies of where can you go, when can you be there, how does this work, those are the things that we cover, so they will all hear it day one, and then for about the first month, the freshman RAP teachers will talk about those expectations every Monday is when we have RAP 9 through 12.
How do you catch new students coming into GSL at whatever high school grade level, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, do they, how do they find out, is it just kind of word of mouth?
So if they come in mid-year.
Yeah.
That would be Sue Magnussen or Whitney Peters or counselors, they would meet with them, a lot of times, if they come into the office, I'll meet with them personally too, and give them a tour around the school, introduce myself, and kind of talk to them about what I think is important for somebody coming into GSL to know.
Okay, great, that's great work, thank you, and once again, thank you for being on board with us.
Thank you.
Superintendent report?
Thank you, first of all, as you noticed that there was a Health FIAD opening, and we filled it with a recent graduate from Tanner Schaefer, but that person is filling is Kim Bender, and I just want to acknowledge her, she had 31 years of service with GSL, but ended up getting a job in Edina where her husband works, and she's actually taking the place of her husband of that same job, but I wanted to acknowledge her for, you know, those, when you can get 30 years or plus in a school district, we just wish her all the best and thank her for that, so I certainly want to acknowledge her on that side of things. As Michelle, other things, as Michelle mentioned, you know, we've been dealing a lot with the parking lot and we're still getting close to being finished with that, but things are moving and it was kind of fun to see the flow of traffic here this morning with the kids, and for the most part, it went really, really well. I also want to say thank you to the several families that donated to our Wings closet and our books, we had a little drive, you know, through the email and had some people bring in stuff, so we are set for the year, and just organizing that closet and organizing some of the things that we have upstairs in the district office so that we are set to help families out. As many of you know, today was the first day of the fall activities, so we did have lots of students back and we were excited to go with that. Through the acknowledgements as well, you know, with some of our other subcontracted groups, I do want to recognize our custodial staff and even our food service today, but I also want to recognize 4.0, 4.0 as we all know is our bus service, and they do a great job with their bus service, but they are also our grounds people, and our grounds people have done a really good job throughout this summer in, you know, working long hours, the other day was kind of a great picture when we had the striping of the parking lot going on with the striping of the ball fields at the same exact time getting ready for today, so I do want to say thank you to 4.0 and all of their work that they did this summer with our grounds. Negotiations update, we continue to move forward with the teachers, we don't, I don't think, Jason, do we have another, John, do we have a meeting set, official meeting set? We don't know, but I know that there will-
meeting set? We don't know, but I know that there will be one at some point in time. They're getting closer, but at this time, we're not completed. The local 284, the next negotiations meeting will be August 27th at 7 o'clock. There's been a lot of time in between, but it's just due to schedules and things where we're at. So we are moving closer and closer with that. Community schools is all set, the five dates. I don't have those off the top of my head, but that is all set, ready to go and scheduled for our community. And we're looking forward to, once again, having our community schools program as a part of GSL this year. And then also workshop days are set and then just a public welcome to everybody. That open house will be here on August 28th from 3:00 to 6:00. Happening and as we get closer to that date, that will be an important date for, for many people to come out and see the school and see all the different things that we have to offer. And then finally, as many of you know, we have a community education director that, you know, is on leave. And we need to now move forward with that particular position and would like to get some direction from the board on where you would like to go with that. It is posted. It's posted as somewhat of a, you know, in terms of licensure requirements. It's kind of open-ended. I did take some time and learned a little bit about some of the requirements that we would have to have. Depending on who you get, you can get a variance, you can work with another school district. So that allows school districts to have somebody that's, that's not licensed. Obviously, if there's somebody that is licensed, that's a good thing, because then you don't have to go down the variance path or go down the path of working with another school district. But in terms of where we are at, I would like to get a little direction from you guys. We do have candidates that have been applying. And I would like to, to keep moving forward with that. But I would like to, you know, get some direction on what you guys would like to see with that position as we move forward.
Sure. Okay. I just want you to get the best candidate for the job, whether licensure or not at this point. Interview, do the process. If you want board members on the process, that's fine. But ultimately, find the best candidate that is willing to accept the conditions of the job right now and hire him.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I've shared with Mr. Sandhu that, that my preference is to post it, looking for and attempting to get a candidate with the appropriate licensure of community ed director. That is, I think, what that position demands. I think that's what our community and public demand. I think that obviously license means something. And it's my preference that we would fill the position with, and the temporary position with somebody that has community ed director license.
And I think at some point in time, that's going to have to happen, you know. But when I, like I said, when I, when I revisited with the state, their first answer to me was, good luck with that. Because it's going to be really difficult to do that. But at the same time, that's why you went through and explored all the different options of what you can do to hire that, that person that will be able to fill in and allow that process to happen. So if, if, if you're okay with me moving forward, because the other thing that you can do is you can just, you know, you could, there's lots of options. My recommendation is to hire the best person and go through the interview process to do that, so that we have that person that's here on a day-to-day basis. You don't have to have somebody here on the day-to-day basis. I don't know if that's what's best for GSL, but you could save some dollars with doing something like that. But I do think that we need to have that position filled with, you know, somebody that will, you know, have a set of eyes on this program. And, and I think we owe that to our community.
Currently, as the position is posted as a temporary one-year position, it's been posted though with not asking for the preferred candidate having a community ed license, right?
Right. And that's, was on purpose from the conversations that I had with the state saying, you know, you don't have to have one licensed in order to, you know, to fill this position as it sees fit. So in order for that, we posted it that way so that we could widen the range of candidates. Obviously, you know, if somebody is the best candidate and they also have the licensure, that's a win-win for, for everything. But we didn't put the required in there because they told me that you didn't have to have it. So I figured, let's see who will apply, let the interview process determine who the best person is, and then we'll bring that recommendation towards you as we move forward with it. But so that was the rationale behind the, the process.
Typically, for any other licensed position, when we post it, we post it with a preferred license being asked for though, right?
We do. But like I said, when I called them, their first question to me was, good luck in trying to find someone. So with that said, you're like, okay, well, what can I do? Well, here's how you can go after the process to see what you can get. And if you find somebody that you think can fill the position, here are some other alternatives that you can do to fulfill the licensure requirement. And that's where you can work with another school district. You can go through the variance and do those types of things to fulfill that requirement. So.
Do the surrounding districts that have community ed directors have licensed community ed directors?
I think most of them do, yeah. If, if you have a community of over 6,000 people, I think it was, you have to have a licensed community education director. If you have a smaller than that community, you, your requirement is not there. But it doesn't say it has to be full-time. It just needs to have that. So then, you know, you ask, okay, what if you can't find anybody, you know, type of thing. And they said, well, here's the things that you can do to fulfill that requirement. And so that's why we posted it the way we posted it. If you guys as a board want me to change the posting, I can go ahead and do that. But I just think you're going to really limit your, your search, especially when it's, as it's posted, a one-year position.
Other questions, comments, discussion?
I just think we're doing it the right way, just because of our unique situation. We have a one-year position. And if, you know, you try and narrow down your field that far, you're going to get very limited results. So I think we're getting better candidates this way. And I say move forward.
I understand what you're saying as far as narrowing the pool. I just think it's narrowing it to individuals that are probably your better candidates. Like I said, in my opinion, license means something. And I guess if you're looking at like a Sibley East or a Central, smaller communities in our area that have a community ed and their community ed director does have a license, you know, I, like I said, I just, I feel license means something. And I think license means high caliber, high quality. And I understand opening it up broader, but I think broader means watering it down. And I think that, you know, like I said, I think your, your top quality candidates and what the community and the district deserves is somebody with a community education license. I think that the programming and stuff is very unique. And I think that's what a license does, is it gives you that additional education to handle the uniqueness of community ed and programming and so on. It's, you know, interesting here at GSL that we've paired it with the fieldhouse. That's, you know, a decision we made as a district, and I'm not saying it's a good one or a bad one. But I think somebody, an individual, a position to operate the fieldhouse is something that, you know, doesn't necessarily require a license, but the community ed piece, I really feel does. But that's just my opinion. Any other questions, comment, discussion?
I guess I'm kind of more in the lines, we're looking at a year position here right now. You know, I'm comfortable if our best applicant doesn't necessarily have the required license needed at this time. There are some options that we can go about for the year time. You know, I definitely think that we need to have somebody in that role. Our community ed program is important to us, you know, and we, I wouldn't want to go the year without somebody if we can't get a applicant with the required license. I think we're just doing our, our program a disservice if we're going to limit it, especially with the unique situation. Right now, we're looking at a year, nine-month, 12-month, you know, position that we're filling. We're not, you know, looking to fill.
I think if this was a permanent position, I think you'd have to have a license. I mean, they would be asking for that requirement, but because of the uniqueness of, of the situation, I think it allows us to, but I understand. I get it.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I'm okay with moving forward.
Okay. Anything else in your report?
Let you do it.
Do you have an update on college credit for music? Have you had a meeting with Stevens Seminary yet?
We did. And we, it's on the board agenda.
Okay.
It's actually on there to, to have that happen.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the report? Committee reports? Are there any committee reports?
Don and I met as a personnel today a couple times. Everyone, we gave out a handout. Don and I have one already on the, it kind of looks like this. Excuse me. Maybe I put it right. Excuse me. A gold standards-based superintendent evaluation. We're just looking at maybe updating our evaluation process. We just gave this for you to look at and whenever you have free time or reading or just scan through it, see if something the board is interested. If they're not, this is from the Minnesota School Board Association, what the process they're using. We, Michelle and her staff were nice enough to help me find this. So just take a look at it and see if there's any interest.
I'm there. Oh, sorry. Usually I have a loud voice, so I apologize. So it's just for, just for you to review and take a look at for right now.
Thank you. Any other reports?
I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank some individuals that helped line up an opportunity for some of us to go and see some of the programming taking place at Hutchinson Schools. I'd like to thank Superintendent Vanderheiden from Hutchinson. I'd like to thank Andrea Moore from the Tiger Path Program. I'd like to thank Corey Groot from 3M. I'd like to thank Brian Smithy from 3M as well. Miles Soplelt from the Economic Development Authority at Hutchinson. We had Mr. Foss take some time to go with us and Mike Morris. And we had Paige Jorgensen as well. John was able to accompany as well. And we just had a nice invitation from them to kind of, we did a little inquiry. We just kind of asked, you know, can you, are you willing to tell us more about the Tiger Path Program? And it started with just a conversation with some individuals that work at 3M. And it's once again, an opportunity for us to look at creating some partnerships, creating some discussion, building an opportunity for mentorships, not only for maybe professional development or staff development here, but also for maybe some students in the form of mentoring or shadowing with businesses. And, and once again, just really building that educational and professional community a little bit more broadly and looking for, like I said, those resources of people, time, money, sounding boards, and just really having a rich discussion of how we can offer best opportunities for all students in the area. And the area, meaning the region, Glencoe, Hutchinson, Silverlake, each of the communities. And it's really looking at and around the area of maybe two-year colleges. It's looking at industrial tech. That's kind of what really started our conversation and discussions is, once again, how can we continue to grow that and learn from others as well, from their bumps and bruises that they maybe have undergone in their programming at Hutchinson so that we can once again learn from them and maybe, once again, do some partnerships and stuff in the future. And Mr. Foss mentioned in the past, at a past meeting about the lift grants. And that's a great opportunity as well. And one of the expectations or requirements of the lift grants is looking for partnerships between districts. And we've got some great partnerships that will be taking place, like you mentioned, in the future with Lester Prairie and with Sibley East. So this might be another opportunity to do some more partnering with area districts and once again, the betterment for all students in our area. So I just want to acknowledge and thank those individuals that extended the invitation to us. It was very, very a great informational piece. And if anyone else gets an opportunity to find out about their programming and stuff, I definitely, definitely encourage them to go and see what's going on over there. Any other questions or comments?
I was just going to mention that this summer, I wrote a grant through McLeod County, Meeker County, Sibley Health, Healthy Communities. And the grant was to partner with our local Jonas Center for our mental health teams. And we were awarded dollars to support that partnership that, that they're going to be able to continue to do that. So that was a really good thing in terms of being able to partner. It's not on the realms of, you know, the manufacturing world. This is on the mental health side of things, which is, I think, pretty important as well. And there, we're going to be able to partner with, with that local agency, with our staff to help kids. So it's a good thing.
Yeah, we are, are fortunate and blessed to have a lot of partnerships already taking place. And when we get to the donor list at each meeting, once again, you see the donors of individuals, organizations, but also companies like 3M that are willing and able to give resources of dollars and cents, but also sometimes the actual people as a resource to, the human resource, which is sometimes overlooked and equally important. Any other committee reports or questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Approve the agenda action item. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Questions or comments? I have a motion by John and a second by Donna to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
One thing I just want to point out real quick on the consent agenda is you'd see two names on there, Stacy Palmer and Randy Wilson, as a hired, as a long-term substitute. They have both been hired and board approved. The reason that this shows up on here is they are both tier-one teachers. And they're not tier-one for the first year. They're a tier-one renewal. And the difference is there's, there's a lot more steps that those two individuals need to do. So they have to attempt their MTLE tests. They have to take a cultural competency course before they can even submit their tier-one packet to the state. I've worked with both Stacy and Randy. They are scheduled to take their MTLEs. Unfortunately, the state dictates when those are offered. So the first attempt that they could take is August 22nd on those. And then once they return it to the state for approval, it takes 30 days for Pelsby to do so. So the long-term sub is just in case that the licensure doesn't come back in time. It doesn't affect them whatsoever with their teaching or their scheduling here at GSL. I just wanted you as a board to know why you're seeing it again.
And so for the media and for the public, that is a licensure thing?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Foss.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks.
Next item, approve consent agenda action item. In closure number one, please note that there is an addendum to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Leish and a second by Jason to approve the consent agenda with the addendum as mentioned. the addendum as mentioned and the information provided by Mr. Foss as well. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Old business, there's none at this time. New business. Item A, resolution relating to increasing the general education revenue of the school district, approving new referendum authorization and calling for an election thereon. Action item enclosure number two. The board of independent school district number 2859, Glencoe-Silverlake Public Schools, has proposed to increase its general education revenue by $460 per pupil. A portion of this proposed referendum revenue authorization would replace the $176.88 per pupil portion of the school district's prior authorization, which, which expires after taxes payable in 2019. The proposed referendum revenue authorization would increase each year by the rate of inflation and be applicable for 10 years, beginning with taxes payable in 2020, unless, unless otherwise revoked or reduced as provided by law. A roll call will be needed for this. Is there any information or questions or comments prior to me asking for a motion?
This was what we discussed at the board meeting, similar to last year. It's a net change of $283.12. And like we discussed at the board workshop session, it, it allows us to do three things. And that's number one, to hopefully continue the programs and services for our kids as best that we can. And I say that because of the fact that you're always looking to run things efficiently. You're always looking to, to make sure that you are providing as much as you can, but at the same time staying, staying within your budget. So that's why I say number one, it will allow us to continue to move forward with programs and services for our kids. Number two, it will allow us to maximize that state aid. Okay? And I think that that's a very important thing that all of us said was a good thing, getting good bang for our buck. And then number three, it allows us to maintain our 20% fund balance policy. When we looked at what we need, I would say that, you know, the number 283 would be more closer to, what do you think, Michelle? Couple of, when we talked about this, you know, to say, hey, what we need to maintain our programs wasn't necessarily quite up to 283. It would be in the 200s. It was, you know, if you remember from even last year's work session, and when our financial planner said, you know, what you need is here, by increasing it just a little bit into a hundred thousand dollar home, it's about a buck a year, you would maximize your state aid, and that would be a very wise thing to do. And so that's why this number has arrived at where it's at. And, and I think that that's an important feature for, for people to understand why we arrived at what we're asking. We're, we're asking for what we need, and at the same time, we're, we're taking advantage of that maximum state aid. And I think that that's a really good thing to do for the school district and for our, our students. Does that all make sense?
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion at this time. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Jamie and a second by Kevin to adopt the resolution authorizing a new board-approved referendum authority. Alicia, will you please help with the roll call vote?
Jamie?
Four.
Kevin?
Four.
John?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
Myself, four. And Donna?
Four.
Motion carries, thank you. Item B, resolution to approve fund balance transfers. Action item. Resolution is needed to approve the following fund balance transfers to be retroactive to June 30th, 2019. Internal Service Fund, Fund 20, transfer of $400,000 to Fund 6 Construction Fund. Operating Capital Fund, Fund 1 is transfer of $343,552.84 to Fund 6 Construction Fund. Internal Service Fund, Fund 20, transfer of $440,197.36 to Fund 1 General Fund, to close out the Internal Service Fund per audit requirement. A transfer of $400,000 from General Fund Unassigned, B01422000 to General Fund Assigned, B01462000 for severance liability. I'll take a motion and a second to put it onto the table, and then I'll have Michelle give us some more information about that. Is there a motion?
So move.
And is there a second?
All right, I've got a motion by Kevin and a second by Donna to approve the following fund balance transfers. Before I take a vote on that, I've talked with Michelle ahead of time, and she's going to provide a little bit more information as to what all that gobbledygook just meant.
I would say you could stop right there, because that's the really simplified version and just keep going if you want, but I can give you some more information on that. But it's very, very complex, so I'm going to walk through it carefully, so at least you feel like you're informed. This is something we've talked about, you know, a year and, and longer ago, about how to take care of that deficit balance in our construction fund and the plan that we had to move forward with that. A lot of entries had to be made to get to where we're at with your motion. So I'm just going to kind of walk you through where we are at and what's happened with all these steps that Jamie just read. So if you remember last year, when we finished our audit, we ended with a negative 1.8 million some dollars in our construction fund. So we had decided, you had decided at our work session as the board, that we were going to use some of our other funding sources to take care of that deficit. We were not going back to the taxpayers. We were going to do it within our own budget, between our long-term facilities maintenance revenue money that we get, our operating capital money, and then our internal service funds. So a combination of those funds to help clear that out and to utilize those funds the best way we could. So the first thing we did was when we paid off our bill last year to the architects, to ARY, that was about a $390,000. So we paid that out of our long-term facilities maintenance revenue fund. And then we moved $285,000 out of Fund 6 of expenditures that were paid out to contractors to our long-term facilities maintenance. So by doing all that, we zeroed out our long-term facility maintenance money. So that fund balance will be at a zero as we move forward, as we complete this, this audit. So by doing those couple of transfers, this left us a negative balance yet in Fund 6, in the construction fund, of about $743,000. So then we looked to the operating capital fund, and we moved $343,552 out of the operating capital to Fund 6 to cover a portion of it. And then we looked at our internal service fund, and we moved to $400,000 out of there into Fund 6. So that totally took care of our negative balance in Fund 6 to clean up the, the deficit that was in there. Now, if you remember, that internal service fund is something that the auditors have been telling us for the last couple of years, that is an area that we need to look to close that out and put it into another fund balance if we so choose to do that. And I think the board's wishes us, we wanted some set aside for a severance to make sure we had some money to cover that liability. So that left us $440,000 in that internal service fund, because we allocated interest to that after June 30th. We knew our total interest that needed to be moved, so we allocated some additional interest to that account. That all had to get moved back first to General Fund, to the unassigned General Fund. Then we set up a new fund in Fund 1, a new balance sheet called, called an assigned reserved balance, and we're going to designate that for severance liability. There was another option that you could choose, and that's called a committed fund balance. If you put it in a committed fund balance, you don't have the flexibility to use those dollars for anything else. By setting it up in an assigned reserved fund balance, you can, as a board, still at some point decide you want to use those dollars for something else. In a couple of years, if something else comes up, you still have that flexibility. So I think the assigned versus a committed fund balance is the way to go. So the additional, the, the remaining $40,000 that was left in the unassigned, I, at this point, left that in the General Fund to offset a negative health and safety adjustment that we had to make. So if you remember, three, four years ago back, when we used to have deferred maintenance and we had health and safety funds, those dollars went away and it all became long-term facilities maintenance revenue funds. The negative health and safety balance has been carried the last couple of years, because they make sure all your levy numbers are run through to make sure you don't have any more changes to that. But this was, June 30th was the deadline that you had to clear out that fund balance in your old health and safety account. The Sticler statute did not let you use your new health and safety money, your new long-term facilities money, to take care of that deficit amount in the old health and safety. It had to come out of General Fund. So therefore, the reasoning of leaving the $40,000 in the General Fund is to help offset that negative amount that we had in the old health and safety account. So this does have to be board-approved, all these different transactions. Like I said, it was a lot of steps to go from Fund 1 to Fund 6, from 6 to 1, because the payable for last year's debt was all set up in Fund 6. So you got to do a lot of back and forth between all these funds. Has to be very clear, you know, that the board knows what these transactions are and what they mean, and that it's approved retroactive to June 30th. And the, the auditors are aware of that. We knew that we didn't, we couldn't do it in June until we knew what all those final numbers were. We're comfortable now, and the, the auditors are, you know, on board. They agree, we've walked through all these numbers, that they're ready for it to go to you, and it'll be reflected in the minutes that it's retro to June 30th. Now, I know that's about as clear as mud, but if you have any specific questions on that, I can certainly try to answer them. You know, if something comes up later, you can certainly give me a call or, you know, shoot me an email. Are you comfortable with those entries as I, as I walked you through them? Is there something different you want to see with those entries?
And it's ultimately what we discussed a while ago about how to pay off the debt. And the good thing is, is we're there.
So this does still leave a $400,000 then in that new balance sheet that'll be reserved for severance liability. You can't touch it. I mean, like I said, it's got flexibility, but for right now, it sits there, it's designated for that. By the way, we worked this numbers, as I'm looking at the numbers right now, it left our operating capital fund balance at quite a bit higher than what I was anticipating. We're currently, as we end June 30th, we're still at almost a $600,000 fund balance in operating capital. So that's very encouraging to me, is I can now go back to the principals after we finish the audit, not tomorrow, but as we finish audit numbers.
They both perked up a little bit, I saw that.
Yeah, they did perk up, because we've had this discussion, I've had it with the principals and the administration. Once we get through audit and we can kind of see where these numbers are in operating capital, because we know we have a couple high needs for curriculum. It was pretty much told them, no, until we get through all this, all these transfers with the debt service, we just, everything got kind of put on, on hold. So I think if we can go back and give them a little bit of money for curriculum, that'll be a good thing for our students this year. But we'll look at that over the next two, three months. It's not, like I said, it's not going to happen tomorrow. It's going to be after we finalize numbers, you know, and, you know, maybe the next month or, or month or two, that we'll be able to free up some dollars to look at some curriculum. So that's my hope anyway, is to get some needed curriculum in some areas that we had to say no this year.
Well, the nice thing about your explanation and the way it's documented here, it, it's a matter of just connecting the dots. I mean, it, like Mr. Sandru said, it's, it's something that we decided as a board was our plan of action for paying it down, and Business Manager Sander mentioned that as well. And this is what it looks like, so that it can be tracked, so that it can be documented, so that it can be transparent, so that it can be followed. As to what the words and actions that we want it to have happen, this is now what it looks like. This is the appropriate way of doing it, and once again, with the blessing of the auditors and, and the assistance of the auditors to make sure that it is documented appropriately.
Now, we'll have one more payment to ARY that is due September 1, that we'll take care of that through our long-term facilities maintenance. And at this point, we have nothing scheduled to be paid to Donler, and I won't, wouldn't without board approval, but at this point, we're not even setting up an additional payable. We're getting nothing from them, so the auditor said, just, just leave it sit. So that's where we're kind of at on those two, those two pieces.
Thank you for keeping us up to date on that as well. I appreciate that.
So the rest of the construction fund right now is only, the only money in there is related to the parking lot abatement bond project.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
And that should be under budget.
Is it done yet?
Close.
I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Donna to approve the following fund balance transfers, as mentioned before, and expanded upon by Business Manager Sander. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item C, inter-agency agreement between GSL and Heartland Community Action Agency Incorporated. Ooh, mouthful. Early head start, head start, action item. Superintendent Sandru recommends approving the inter-agency agreement between Glencoe-Silverlake School District and Heartland Community Action Agency Incorporated, early head start, head start, from September 1st, 2019, through August 31st, 2020. The agreement establishes working procedures between the programs to provide services to children ages birth through five, in compliance with federal and state laws and regulations. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
So move.
I have a motion by Jason and a second by John to approve the inter-agency agreement between Glencoe-Silverlake School District and Heartland Community Action Agency Incorporated, early head start, head start, from September 1st, 2019, through August 31st, 2020. Questions, comment, discussion?
We do this each year.
It really has to do with a public school district needing to be a child, and obligation for special education. That's really the essence of the agreement.
Okay. And that's done yearly, every year at the same time?
Just got to re-
Yep, just a renewal or?
Yep. They always do just one-year contracts and-
Nothing really changes within them.
Nope.
It's just a documentation piece.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item D, Central Lakes College in the School Contract, action item. Superintendent Sandru recommends approval of the CIS College in School for Band and Choir Contract with Central Lakes College for 2019-2020 Academic School Year. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I've got a arm wrestle. I've got a motion by John and a second by Kevin to approve the CIS contract with Central Lakes College for 2019-2020 Academic School Year. Questions, comments, discussion? That's kind of the question that I'd asked earlier, so any additional information about that?
No, and I'm not sure if, you know, we've put these contracts onto the agenda, and this is somewhat that we've, it was a new contract, and one of the things that we worked with, with the college is a funding source, and one of the things that we have always had is Stephen Seminary helped support our college-in-the-schools program, not just through here, but all through, through the ones that we have with Southwest Minnesota State University. And I got a chance to meet with Stephen Seminary and, and talk to them a little bit about the opportunity here, and, and they were very excited about being able to support it. And they don't fully support the college-in-the-school, the bill that we have, but they certainly help out. And, and with that helping out, it allows us to be able to, to, you know, comfortably put this into the, into our offerings with our students. And Mr. Gepson is here, and he will be the instructor with the band, and our new choir teacher, Mr. Iverson, will be the instructor with the, with the choir. And they just have to kind of work on a little bit of logistics that will have this, and it will be just a great opportunity for our kids that will be able to get some college credit while they go to band and choir.
So what is Stephen Seminary involvement with this?
They help support the bill.
Okay.
They're providing some funding, because this is easy to, to add, but it costs dollars to add these programs. And, and when people ask, you know, when you look at big picture conversations with why we're needing to pass a referendum, these are examples of things that, that come up that we have to wrestle around with, with being able to, God, this is a great opportunity for our students, but it also costs money. And, and trying to find those balances is what we do on a daily basis, and I, and I think, I think we did that, and, and now I feel really comfortable being able to make this work for our students. And, and we're always trying to provide better opportunities for our students, and this is a, a, an example of that happening, so.
This is a great example of that. What- This is a great example of that. What, what is the cost to do this and what is Stephen Seminary portion of that?
Well, typically what they've done is they've supported half, if not up to a dollar amount of our College in the Schools program. But that changes year to year because of the fact of how many kids register for certain classes. We may have, you know, X amount of College in the School classes. Next year, we could have more and, and then they would be able to continue to support. And so I, when I meet with them, I go through and, and this is one of their areas that they really like to support. And, and it allows us to help our big picture general fund budget to have a little bit of supplemental income coming in to support these things. And, and it's part of our balancing act of keeping kids here in our school as opposed to taking off, going P S E O and those types of things. So that's what they typically have done. The cost of this, Pete, was what, 5,000 each semester? And it depends on how much we want to do. A year long, so. 2,500 bucks. Okay. 5,000 bucks.
Break it down on per credit hour cost. It's like $10,000.13.
Yeah.
It's for the student, but for us, we generate a lot of credits. I think it's attractive for our students. I think that we, we're starting to see, and Mr. Fosse and I had this discussion earlier, we see students now that are doing post-secondary options for part of their day, but are still choosing to come back to GSL and be involved in our band and choir program. And I think sometimes those students maybe, maybe they go away from that. This might be a way to get them back.
Sure.
I think every little, it's, it's a part of a much bigger picture than what they're in. I think it's important to point out that the state, or the state is maintaining what the colleges are charging. So it does go up, that flat fee goes up just slightly for the next two years.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's 27.50.
I think that's what it was after that. Yeah. And the way we've got it structured, I, I think is a really positive way of, of doing it. And like I said before, being able to get this into the, into the budget with the, with the support of Stephen Seminary, assuming that they'll continue to support College in the Schools. When, when we had the meeting, they, they certainly indicated that they would continue to do so. It, it's an, it's a great example of, of trying to do what's best for kids. But unfortunately, that comes at a cost. And we worked hard to make this work. And I think the success is going to be there because it's going to give our kids an opportunity to get some college credit. And that's a really good thing.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion by John and a second by Kevin to approve the CIS contract with Central Lakes College for the 2019-2020 academic school year. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you to Stephen Seminary in advance for their support of that. And thank you to Mr. Gepson and Mr. Iverson for being the instructors to be able to offer that. That's a great opportunity for our GSL students. Item E, truth and taxation hearing, information only. The Glencoe Silverlake School District will hold its truth and taxation hearing prior to the regularly scheduled December 9th School Board Meeting in the GSL Schools Community Room 443444, beginning at 6:00 PM. The levy will be certified at the regular board meeting at 7:00 PM that same evening. No school board action is required. Item F, approval of hiring two sped program para professionals, action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of hiring two special education program para professionals for 7.25 hours per para, per day at Lincoln due to student enrollment. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Donna to approve the hiring of two sped, special education program para, para professionals. Questions, comments, discussion, information?
Well, as Bill mentioned earlier, you know, some of the student needs that we have are increasing. And when you need to follow I E P requirements, these are some of the things that you need to do. And I'm just letting you guys know that we're might not be, we might not be done with hiring of para professionals. We're looking at it more as we go, but, but we're doing what we can to keep it as efficient as possible. But you are also obligated by law to follow I E P requirements. And unfortunately, some of the needs that our students have are, are having these. And so we're doing the best we can, but just need you to know that there's going to be a potential that in September, there will be another line item that has more para support.
Are the, are the special needs increasing in, in a lot of our districts around? I would assume so.
Yeah, the percentage is increasing statewide, Kevin. It's either in this bubble where we're increasing more rapidly.
GSL.
Okay. Right, right. And, you know, we had our annual meeting with, with the co-op director, Diane and Karen. And she doesn't have an explanation, but what she consistently tells us is that, you know, she'll say, you know, Chris and Bill and Matt, I, I walk around your hallways and I see more kids than I do at other districts, especially with significant disability. So I don't know the why, Kevin, but, you know, it is happening.
Well, I think there, I think people in the public are seeing that, that it is being taken care of. Like, when I think they're happy with, you know, what they're seeing. So whether that's a reason why the numbers are increasing more here, I don't know. But I, I think they're happy, the public is happy with what they're seeing. So.
We do try to meet the, the needs of our, of our students, but once again, it comes at a cost. And, you know, you don't get the full reimbursement for these positions. It does come out, there's portions of it that comes out of the general fund. And when you have deficit spending happening and you have needs of students that continue to decrease, you get to the point of where you're at. And with marching orders of making sure that our fund balance stays at 20%, you get to a point where you need to go back to the voters and have an increase of $283.13. I think it was 13 cents, 12 cents, to allow us to continue to offer those programs and services for our students.
This is another great opportunity for us as a district to tell our story to the legislators, both state and federal, obviously federal, but, you know, it isn't unique to us. But, you know, I think having them understand, you know, the pressures that it does put on the general fund balance and of course, delivering the top-notch education to all students, being inclusive of all students, just another opportunity to remind them of the importance of fully funding, fully funding their mandates that they put upon us. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. G, formal evaluation of Superintendent tabled in July, information only. The school board conducted a formal evaluation of Superintendent Sanju. The Personnel Committee Directors Lemke and Vonberg will present a report on the evaluation. No school board action is necessary.
As part of the Personnel Committee, we formulated this paragraph or two, I should say. For 2018-19 school year, the Glencoe Silverlake Board feels that Mr. Sanju has done a very satisfactory job. He is upbeat and enthusiastic about all of our students, parents, and programs at GSL. Mr. Sanju is always willing and able to help inspire and encourage students and staff to perform at their best potential. Mr. Sanju does a great job of keeping the general public aware of what's at work in the GSL district. When the situations and problems do arise, Mr. Sanju does an adequate job of listening to the situations and problem solving and working to resolve the issues at hand. We want to thank Mr. Sanju for all he does at the GSL district.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to the Personnel Committee for doing the evaluation and meeting with Mr. Sanju. Item H, second reading of policies, action item. The following policies receive their first reading at the July 8th School Board Meeting. It is a recommendation of the Policy Committee Directors Lemke and Luckhart and Superintendent of Schools to adopt these policies. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'll make that second. I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Jamie to adopt the policies as listed above. Questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item I, resolution to accept donations, action item. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by Donna and a second by Alicia to adopt, to accept, I should say, the donations as listed below. Questions, comments, discussion? Once again, thank you to the organizations and businesses listed there. We are very blessed and fortunate to once again have the support of many partners in our communities to help support our GSL students and in many different ways. And you can see the designations there as well as the donation amounts. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much on behalf of the board and the district as a whole. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item J, miscellaneous, none at this time. Motion to adjourn. And is there a second? I'll make that second. There's a motion by Jason and a second by Jamie to adjourn at 8:25 PM. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.